If I did that.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, good evening everyone. I'd like to commence proceedings tonight by inviting our general manager to recite the council prayer.
Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to vouchsafe thy blessing upon this council. Direct and prosper, direct and prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Clarence. Amen.
Amen. Before proceeding, I'd like to acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal people as the traditional custodians that Antwerp meeting on tonight and pay our respects to elders past and present. And remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded audio visually and will be available on the council website later this week. Thank you. Keep the meeting open, a note and apology from Alderman James. Item two, complacent minutes for the 8th of July and a special council meeting on the 22nd of July is circulated. Be taken as read and confirmed. Thanks Alderman Blomley, second Alderman Warren. All those in favour? Against? That was carried, sorry.
It's a light four.
Carried unanimously, thank you. Item three, mayors communication, like to report that Shane Stevenson, state manager for North Melbourne Football Club, called on myself and the general manager early this week, expressing an interest in working at our memorandum of understanding with Clarence City Council in the area of community development. And we suggested to him that he write formally requesting that he come and brief council at a workshop on what he's got in mind and give us an opportunity to find out more about it. So that's just to bring you up to date with that. Item four, the council notes the workshops conducted on the 15th and 22nd of January in the agenda brief on the 26th of January. Thanks Alderman Pierce, second Alderman Kendy. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item five, declarations of interest of Alderman or close associate. Alderman Pierce?
Mayor, declare an interest in 11.5.1, Angie Park.
Thank you. Alderman Ewington, sorry?
Well, I've got current questions, I'm not going to be sure you can ask a question.
Sure.
Well, my uncle's got a DA up, he's only found out yesterday, is that?
General Manager?
Sorry, what was it?
My uncle's got, he's got a DA up now, but I mean, I didn't know he had up until I saw him yesterday, so I...
Which item was that? Sorry, Alderman? 11.3.3? Okay, Alderman Kendy?
Yes, declare a conflict in 11.3.5.
Thank you. And Alderman Evans?
Yeah, 11.5.1.
Thank you. Okay, there have been no other declarations. Move on to item six, taping of petitions, there are none in the agenda. Any petitions from the floor? Thank you. Item seven, public question time. 7.1, public questions on notice, there's one from Denise Coggan. General Manager, if you can provide an answer to that please.
Thank you, Mayor. The question was, the proponent for a development in Rosy Hill nature recreation area showed a clearly defined development area marked on maps displayed to the public on the 2nd of July 2019. Has Clarence City Council entered into an offer to lease or similar contract with Hunter Developments? The answer to that question is no.
Thank you. Item 7.3, answers to previous questions taken on notice, and there's one there for Mrs Marsh. General Manager, if you've got a response to that please.
Thank you, Mayor. The question is, sorry, the response to the question is quite lengthy and set out in the agenda and I propose to take that as approved.
Thank you. 7.4, questions without notice, are there any questions from members of the public without notice? Thank you, if you could come forward please.
My name's Victor Marsh. 32A King Street, Billree. Vice Commodore of the Billree Yacht Club stated in his address to the council on the 17th of May about the redevelopment, redevelopment of the marina, that this development will have services equivalent to any marina in the world, increase the amount of people in the Billree Village itself, and will also assist the local businesses. The Billree Village precinct is already under pressure regarding pedestrian safety, traffic flow and parking. Also, there are major developments earmarked close by that will add to this pressure. So my question is, when will the council begin working on a traffic management plan that will provide for safe and efficient traffic management, pedestrian wellbeing and safety, and minimise local impacts?
Marsh, Mr Graham, are you in a position to provide advice or we take the question on notice?
Very, Mr Mayor, I'd like to take that one on notice, thank you.
Thank you. There'll be an answer in the agenda meeting, papers for the next meeting, Mr Marsh. Any other questions from members of the public for that notice? Thank you. Moving on to item eight, deputations by members of the public, General Manager?
Thank you, we have three deputations tonight. First is Miss Emily Houston in respect to 31 Tiana Road.
While we're coming forward, if I could remind all people making a deputation that under meeting rules, we've only got three minutes and there'll be a tone of two and a half minutes to give you an opportunity to wrap up.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm one of the architects involved with the development and I just thought I would attend today to give you a bit of a quick overview of the proposal. Currently, it's a vacant site on Tiana Road up on the hill. The proposal is for three bedroom apartment. I'm not sure if you can say that, but you'll have the plans in front of you as well. The site is a steep site with a gradient that changes in height of about 25 metres from the front to the rear. The proposed building has been designed to fit with the constraints of the site, we're remaining, retaining the garden and native vegetation at the rear of the site up the hill. So it's in keeping with the neighbouring houses which are generally located quite close to the street. The building, the proposed building fits entirely within the planning envelope and we have submitted drawings which clearly show in 3D how that, how that works. So essentially, the building envelope in the planning scheme goes up the hill with the slope of the hill and the building is proposed to stay entirely within that. The proposed building complies with the planning scheme site coverage requirement as well. The building covers only 19% of the site area and there is 60% of the site area remaining, which is impervious, free from impervious services. The building has been positioned on the site with above three metre setbacks, so we've got 5.4 metre setback from the south boundary and 7.6 metre setback from the north boundary. It has six car spaces in a private garage, two per dwelling, and it also complies with the visitor car space requirement of the planning scheme, providing one car space on the property. There's an existing driveway which we can see from Tiana Road, which also services 29 Tiana Road, and the proposed upgrades are to improve that driveway and widen it, and we'll address that in more detail in the building permit phase. That's about it.
Very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker tonight is Ms Kate Hodgkinson Brown in respect to the development application for 64 Keuta Road.
Thank you, Mayor and Alderman. My name is Kate Brown and I'm here along with a few of my fellow neighbours at Keuta Road, Rose Bay, to make a statement regarding the development, application 183, the four dwellings for 64 Keuta Road. I believe the proposed development of 64 Keuta Road should be rejected on the grounds that it does not comply with the Clarence interim planning scheme 2015 and the performance criteria have not been met. I believe that units three and four are not within the building envelope, the land has been overdeveloped for the surrounding area, and it will create traffic and parking issues on a very busy street to Rose Bay High School. It will also cause severe loss of amenity to adjoining lots, including loss of sunlight to living spaces of 66 Keuta Road for approximately 50% of the daylight hours as measured on the 21st of June 2019. I believe that council planners have not given accurate weight to these considerations and I urge you to consider a locals perspective, someone who knows the area. Changes could be made to address these issues so that development can still occur. Of course, we want to encourage development in our community, but a balance must be maintained so the rights of the existing community members are not unfairly prejudiced. From initial advice I have received, I believe engineers and independent town planners will support my statements and I am prepared to lodge an objection should it be approved tonight. This is supported by my neighbours, but I should not have to do that, you should make the right decision tonight. Please don't waste time and money approving this application in its current format. Thank you for your time.
Our third speaker tonight is Mr Bruce Glanville in respect to the development application for 25 Dillon Street.
Let's like to thank the council for the opportunity to speak tonight. Just firstly, I wanted to try and correct a factual error in the planner's report. If you're looking on page 130 of the agenda minutes, it talks right towards the end of the planner's summary where the applicant did not identify an alternative solution. The council's officer considers that there may be alternative methods of ensuring compliance and that under AS 1926, pool fencing only needs to be 1.2 metres high and the previous wall of 1.8 metres high would have complied with Australian standards. It's just not correct. I supplied an Australian standard figure to the planner explaining that because this is a, on a boundary, there's a different criteria that's needed to be met, it has to be 1.8 metres high and it has to be 1.8 metres high on the inside of the fence to prevent passersby being able to easily gain access to the pool safe area. I did explain that at the time and was still quite concerned that it's appeared in the report. This very minor safety fence has been in place for 14 months and has also been advertised. It gained no objections during advertising and to my knowledge, there's been no correspondence with council about any concern for that fence. Screen, I should say. This is a corner lot where the frontage that we're talking about isn't a primary frontage, it's a pseudo backyard as, and if you look within the planning scheme where it sets out the corner lots, that's exactly what these sorts of areas are for. It's why they have zero side and rear setbacks to allow the front and side yards to be used for private open space and other activities such as the swim spa that we proposed. This is a safety barrier, as I've suggested, for passersby and thus forms an integral part of the structure of the dwelling, so the extension, the deck and the swim spa and its safety surrounds. And so if you, one was to consider it in that way, you could, the proposal would be easily supportable as there is an example of a zero front setback dwelling right next door to this property. And within that, it will still read as an, so looking at the proposal, it's still going to read as the existing 1800 Highway brick fence which has always been there with this very minor screen simply behind it. I'll just quickly to summarise, if you look at part 10.4.2, setbacks and building envelope, envelope for all dwellings, simply in the performance criteria P2, it allows a setback from a frontage that is compatible with existing dwellings in the street. So, thank you.
Moving on to item nine, motion on notice, Alderman Ewington. Do you have a second for that motion please? Thanks Alderman Kendy.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank my colleagues for giving me the opportunity to, I suppose, raise this issue and then present it to council. I mean, obviously, I've got a bit of a history and background in the health and fitness side of things and the preventative health agenda and to be honest, I, you know, it's something that I'm passionate about, I mean, I just find it so frustrating that we seem incapable of coming up with a solution on this issue, you know, because it's something that's happening right in front of us. You know, the way we live and technology's changed our lives so much and yet we seem incapable of actually acknowledging that and then coming up with ways to fix the problem. You know, and while, you know, in this motion here, we're talking about what state government should do, or hopefully do, and other councils hopefully jump on board as well, the reality is this is an issue that we all own and we all face and we all have to deal with collectively. You know, expecting that we can fix our health situation simply by throwing more money at hospitals, I certainly don't think is the answer and something that's in our best interests either. I mean, I'm sure there's certain situations out there where hospitals are very, very important, but because a lot of the problems that are happening in our society are caused by some of the choices people make, but also too, some of the changes caused by that technology, we need to be able to plan for that and come up with solutions to deal with it. I mean, just a couple of little things, I mean, one thing that really concerns me about the whole debate is that when it comes to the cost of inactivity and poor health in the community, the facts and figures that are put forward and even in the public health report that came out in 2018, it was just released in May, the Tasmania report was using figures from 2011 stating that the actual cost of physical activity on our community was attributed to be 5%, which is just ridiculous, it's, that's just way too low. And then I noticed in Queensland, they've just established a new health and wellbeing bureaucracy, which I certainly don't think is the answer to come up with another bureaucracy to deal with this. Their stats were 91% of all deaths are caused by chronic disease and 86% of recurrent health expenditure is related to dealing with chronic health disease. So even then, I don't think we're really being fair enough about the costs involved with this, with this major issue. And I mean, really, it comes down to, you know, a quality of life thing too. You know, we can't afford to keep spending more and more and more every year on the health system and really doing nothing on prevention. Now, I know there's some people out there, I mean, some of the health bureaucrats that I've talked to, that suggest that we are doing stuff, but I mean, the stats don't lie and the fact that we're up to the point now where around about 66% of the community are overweight or obese and around about 30% or 33% of the third of kids are in the same sort of situation. You know, whatever we're doing, I know people mean well and I know they're trying hard, but it really means, it needs to be something that needs to be taken on head on and actually dealt with. You know, and the issue is that, I mean, you know, I read pretty widely in this space and try and look at what other people are doing and the reality is that no state or no city or no country has really got this right yet. And I think some of that is to do because of the political cycles that get in the way, but really it also comes down to, to, you know, the fact that we're not demanding it. So I mean, the community have got to take responsibility for the fact that we're getting what we ask for at the moment and that really needs to change. You know, yet we all want to complain about our health fund costs going up, we want to worry about our taxes going up, and everyone says all of that, but then there's never, we never go to the next step and actually look at how do we deal with it all. I mean, one of the concerning things that I found in the public health report too was that 81% of the Tasmanian population reported that they'd met, they'd met the exercise guidelines, which I know is certainly not the case. I mean, I know that, you know, I mean, there's no way that 81% of people are doing up to five hours a week of exercise, it just, it just isn't happening. And part of the problem with that is that we've actually watered down the definition of exercise to what we think people will do, not what the actual science says. And that's where with my background in, you know, looking at the science, I mean, the word physical activity and exercise are used as meaning the same thing and they're not. I mean, the benefits of exercise, jeez, that went quick, the benefits of exercise are far greater than the benefits of going for a walk. So if jogging or increasing the intensity is more beneficial, we should be saying that. If strength training is going to help with mental health issues as well as diabetes, you know, arthritis and, you know, managing weight, we should be saying that. And we haven't progressed the public health message, that's a major thing. But the other side of it too is, I mean, since I've been on council, we just don't have the resources in terms to provide the infrastructure that we really do need to have to create the open space and, you know, let a bit of sports grounds, barbecue areas, picnic grounds, all those sort of things, which is going to get people together, get them connected and be able to come up with ways of encouraging people to get off their computers, get off their tablets and get families and the whole communities outside and enjoying, mixing, you know, with everyone else. So, look, it's, I know we can do better, I know that people should want us to do a bit better in this space. And I mean, if that worsens, we create a bit of debate and actually get some people to actually acknowledge the issue and try and get some other people involved rather than just the same voices coming up with the same policies, well, I think we're certainly going to have a better society and, you know, we're all going to be hopefully thanked for it in the future.
Thanks Alderman Ewington. Just to be clear, the motion that's being spoken to is as circulated, it didn't come out in the agenda, it has part B to it, which invokes a request to Elvad for support. Alderman Kendy, would you like to speak to it?
Just very briefly, Mr Mayor, a motion that includes in the explanatory comments the words prevention and mental health has my support.
Other speakers? I guess there's no need for writer reply. Alderman Blomley? No need for writer reply?
Yeah, I appreciate, obviously, everyone seems pretty happy with what's there and I mean, I really had to work with all my colleagues on this issue. And I mean, just, just a bit of a background too, I mean, I did speak to some other mayors.
We can't introduce new topic on this, you've got to sum up what the debate has been basically.
I think there's widespread support out there in the local government community to move down this path and I think, you know, working with other government layers to try and stop the duplication that goes on and find a real pathway forward, you know, I sort of welcome that and I also welcome the opportunity to talk to my colleagues and really try and get a much better outcome in this space. So, thank you.
So the motion is as depicted on the board, all those in favour? Carried unanimously, thank you. Moving on to reports, reports from single and joint authorities. We're no longer a member of the Southern Tasmanian Council for files, so if you could have that removed, please, General Manager, on my agenda page? Copping refuse disposal site, there's nothing to report, thank you. Tasmanian Water Corporation, I have a quarterly report to submit table later. And moving on to 10.2, reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies. I had a certa meeting on the 11th of July, a South East Region Development Association meeting, which Clarence City Council is a partnering member along with Sorrel, Tasman and Northern Spring Bay councils, and I'd like to table the previous minutes for that. And I'd also like to table the minutes of the Greater Hova Homelessness Alliance meeting on the 5th of July. The next meeting for that is on Friday, the 9th of August. Are there any other reports from special or council committees and other representative bodies? Alderman Chong?
Yes, I'll table the minutes of the Richmond Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Being no other reports, thank you. Moving on to reports of officers, at the 11.1, that the information in the weekly briefing reports of the 8th, 15th and 22nd of July have been noted. Alderman Pierce, second Alderman Blomley, are there any questions? Put the motion in, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.2, determination of petitions, 11.2.1 in regard to proposed suburb boundary changes at Paragardens, that basically that we note the intentions and will take them into account during our public consultation phase. Thanks Alderman Pierce, seconder, Alderman Kendy. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously, thank you. Council now intends to sit as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act. The first item is 11.3.1, which is a development application at 31 Tiana Road, Lindisfarne, and adjoining road reservation for three multiple dwellings. Alderman Walker, thank you. And second Alderman Kendy. Alderman Walker, would you like to speak to this motion?
Yes, indeed. Three units, you know, in a more compact fashion than we're used to seeing in this council and that, to be honest, is the way you would hope it would be with a block like this. It means that the, if you like, the hillside will still remain largely vegetated, so I think it's a reasonable application and, you know, it has, has set dormant since the fire of Tiana Road in 2007 when the previous house burnt down, so I think, I think it's a, it's a pretty reasonable way forward and seek council support.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, just support the officer's recommendation.
Other speakers? Put the motion for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.2 is a development application for three Buscombe Street, Billree for one lot subdivision. Thanks Alderman Mulder, second Alderman Blomley. Alderman Mulder?
I forward, Mr Mayor, a break up lot of land that we've long wondered why it wasn't going to be used, denied your permission.
Other speakers? Put the motion for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Now, I understand, Alderman Ewington, you take leave at this point? Thank you. 11.3.3 is a development application at 64 Keuta Road, Rose Bay for four multiple dwellings. Alderman Mulder, thank you. Do we have a second please? Alderman Pierce? Alderman Mulder? Thank you. Alderman Pierce?
Mayor, I've had a look at this and I saw the objection, I went through it and I've had a look at the site and I'm not that far away from it and I, I noticed that the, today, and I checked with Mr Lovell to make sure I was correct, the unit two, which I think has caused some issues, is actually, if I recall, about two metres from the boundary and the side where it's butting, I think 66, is 1.5 from the boundary. So it is very close, but when you look at the, the shadow diagrams, I'm quite happy that they comply, we all know June 21st is a time when there is quite a bit of shadowing, but I mean, other than that, I think it's a good proposal, I'm not quite sure why we should actually refuse it, I see no logical reason why we should and I support the officer's recommendation.
I had a closer look at this property yesterday. I'm very familiar with Keuta Road, having been a parent, taking children to school, it's impassable in school hours and the report makes specific mention of that being for a short period of time each day. Well, I was there on Sunday afternoon and I had to pull over twice to let people go past. The road is very narrow and there is a considerable amount of traffic at all times. I parked directly opposite and coincidentally spoke to the owners of the property directly opposite, who tell me that they have trouble getting out of their driveway at the moment. So adding another eight or nine cars to that property is going to cause significant traffic issues, which I don't believe are fully taken into account in the officer's report. I would also question, with all due respect to the officers, the planning officers, that the overshadowing is reasonable, because it is overshadowing, my understanding is that it's the kitchen and living area and I, for one, like to get up on a Saturday morning, take my coffee into the living area, you know, the kitchen and living area and sit for a couple of hours over the paper. And if that's overshadowed for half the day, that has a significant impact on amenity and also on heating costs in the middle of winter, when you're not getting that sun to the living area for the first three hours of the day. So I think that there is room for improvement and I will not be supporting the motion in its current form. its current form.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do share the concerns that Alderman Warren has raised, particularly related to traffic and those, and the particular issues. However, on the traffic front, there isn't a great deal we can do about the fact that it's a made street and it's designed for those things. So unfortunately, it's not like there's going to be a hundred additional car movements or anything like that. And we've had that debate many a time in this place. In regard to the overshadowing, I do also share those concerns. However, if you have a look at the officer's report and the shadow diagrams that accompany it, although we all wish we could have, you know, that sunlight in those particular hours, it's been quite clear from many a planning decision that three hours of sunlight during the winter solstice at nine to 12 has been deemed by the tribunal on a number of occasions to be adequate, and therefore it wouldn't stand, I don't think, an appeal on those grounds. So although I have some sympathy with it, the fact is that we sit here as a planning authority and we don't have much option but to follow the precedents and the guidelines that the Planning Commission, the Acceptable Solutions and the Performance Criteria provide. So although my sympathy is there, as a planning authority, I don't think we have a basis for refusing this.
Well, that's it, actually. That was a rider reply, my apologies. So the recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Could we recall Alderman Newington, please? 11.3.4 is a development application at 25 Dillon Street, Bell Reef, for offensive extension. Thank you, Alderman Newington. As circulated?
Circulated, yeah.
Do we have a second for the circulated one? Alderman Blomley, thank you. Alderman Newington, you wish to speak to it?
Yeah, I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I suppose, I mean, the points raised, which were raised by the speaker in the early stages, I mean, this was really only caused by another law of regulation, I suppose, if I may look at it. But I mean, the safety concerns created by putting a pool in a, in a, in a house like that, obviously, you know, pretty important, we've got pretty stringent rules on those sort of things to protect safety of the residents and passersby in this instance. So I think, you know, the intent there was to do the right thing and was only at the end when it was identified that it was, it needed to have a planning approval. Now, I suppose, to be honest, something like this where the safety comes into it, really, in my mind, I suppose, the fact that there isn't a, the opportunity for the council staff to look at this sort of situation and be able to make a decision to say it should be okay, really just reflects, I suppose, the rigidity of our planning scheme. And I think in my mind, an area that certainly needs to be looked at. You know, the fact that there were no representations against the proposal suggests that, you know, it really wasn't affecting anyone else. And I think it did look pretty similar in terms of the height. And I suppose from an aesthetics point of view, I mean, I look at it and think, well, it looks fine compared to the other structures that are in the street. And I don't think it certainly had a place in that area. You know, it really doesn't affect anyone adversely. And the safety aspect of things which I put in my motion there is that, you know, the fence is there for safety. And in my mind, in my interpretation of the situation, it certainly is compatible with what's in the local area. And that's certainly reflected by the lack of representations against this proposal. So I'd certainly encourage my colleagues to support my motion and allow this, you know, common sense situation to prevail and these guys to get on and us to focus on more important issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And there's not a great deal more I can add to the comments of the move of the motion tonight, except to say to highlight that we're discussing a safety screen. A safety screen has been in place now for some 14 months. The safety screen has not received any complaints, even after council's rest and advertising. Not one single objection has been received. And yet, here we are. Here we are discussing a safety screen and being asked to deliberate on the retrospective approval or otherwise of said safety screen. Mr. Mayor, this screen provides protections for pedestrians walking past the property along King Street. And importantly, as we heard time from Mr. Glanville, complies with Australian standards. So as we know, the swim spa has been approved. And if council do not retrospectively approve this small safety screen, an additional safety screen of some sort will still be required to make the spa safe for any pedestrians or passersby. In fact, as we've all been informed by the applicant at an email date of the 22nd of July, the design was originally passed by both council in the planning side of things and building survey for certificate of likely compliance without the safety screen. Now, the need for the safety screen was only identified during a site inspection late in the construction process. And as we've been told and informed, this requirement is only for people outside of the property. The screen is deliberately set back behind the fence line to reduce its visual importance and also by being complementary material to a lower portion of the fence. And as outlined by Mr. Glanville tonight, Australian standards are quite clear as to what height that screen needs to be. Quite clear. Mr. Mayor, I'm really going to lose my chin now and say that in my humble, subjective opinion, and utilizing my discretion as a member of this planning authority, that this safety screen is an enhancement to the streetscape. And for the reasons outlined in the motion tonight, this council will be well positioned to support the retention of said safety screen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I won't be supporting Alderman Newington's motion, because I actually support the officer's report and recommendation. I think it's really important to note that there are two aspects here. There's the planning requirements and there's the building requirements. And we are looking at the planning requirements, we are the planning authority. So I think it's very important that we keep that in mind. Just a bit of context, most of the development applications that actually come to us are dealt with by the officers under delegation. The huge number of them that come to us are dealt with in that way. A small number of them come to the Alderman for one reason or another. And an even smaller number are recommended for refusal by the officers. And particularly where it's a retrospective application, as this one is. In my time on council, 12 years almost, I, I don't think I can think of an application which is a retrospective one for refusal that has actually been overturned and supported by the Alderman. So I think that's the context in which we need to look at this. Yes, there are some issues here, but they are in relation to the building aspect of it. And the planning aspect of it is very clear and the officers have been very, very clear in what they are saying. My concern, as is the concern of the officers, is that if we approve this, then we are actually going to be using this, in essence, as the compatibility test in relation to height and transparency. So I cannot support Alderman Newington's motion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just on this particular issue, perhaps we should just hear from the, from Mr. Lovell in regards to the planning assessment of this. What is the standard required for the fence under 1926.2 on the height?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think you're referring to the Australian standard. Actually, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know whether Mr. Tuwic can add. It's a building matter. And the, and why I say I don't, I actually don't know that is because we actually said above that it was not relevant to the assessment of the performance criteria. But I don't know whether Mr. Tuwic is in a position to clarify the Australian standard. I don't know.
Alderman, please. Alderman Mulder, you have the floor?
I take the, I take the note, but I also have to buy the copy of the Australian standard. So it might be on Google, but I'm not in a position to do that. The point of the exercise is, is that the AS 1926.2 is actually referred to in the officer's report. And on the basis of that, it is, it is said that it needs to be 1.2 metre high. We've also heard that under the building requirements, it's supposed to be 1.8 metre high. Now, it just seems to me that if there's a conflict between the planning and the, and the building standards, then we need to go to the one which provides the most protection, in which case this is the motion that is before us, rather than the recommendation of the officer's report. So it seems to me that we ought to be all on the side of caution in regards to, and not using a lower planning standard when the building standard is required for the safety reasons. So on that basis, and also, just, just some commentary has been made that, you know, this shouldn't have come to council. Well, I'm sorry, it is a planning matter and the planning scheme is not an optional issue. And as such, it is most appropriate that we come in here. Also, is the fact that the officers have recommended for refusal. And if there's a discretion, then that's the sort of thing that the elected representatives of the people should be exercising in terms of whether we go with the officers or not. Under this particular case, I will go for, I will be on the side of caution and go for whatever is provided the best protection and safety issues.
Walker?
Thank you. I won't be supporting the officer's recommendations, but I understand it's a quirk how they've arrived there. They've diligently acted as planning officers, interpreting planning rules. And when planning schemes are designed, and the current planning scheme is not perfect, in fact, you know, I hark back to the 2007 Clarence Planning Screen, anytime these conversations come up as something better. But we're dealing with what we have before us and there are ramifications if we, if we do follow the officer's advice. I don't, you know, the reasons for refusal are listed as point one. It's inconsistent with the front fences for all dwellings. There isn't actually a Dillon's, you know, there's not actually a consistent white picket fence the whole way down this, this street, or a brick fence or any other type. There's a mix. And there's a mix of heights as well. Second point is that it doesn't satisfy performance criteria, specifically that there are no other examples in the street and the topography and the traffic volumes do not warrant the proposed solution. The safety, the safety matters certainly do. If someone is of mind to appeal this decision, should we, should Alderman Newington's alternative be successful, then I guess we'll get some clarity at a higher level.
But just procedurally, there's no representation, so no appeal is possible.
Thanks for the clarity. I would encourage councillors to, to indeed support Alderman Newington's motion. It might not be a specific planning matter, but the reality is if a refusal occurs and a pool gets, has to be removed as a consequence, we're looking, you know, I would have referred to Andrew Paul, that we're looking like an episode of grassroots. But I guess in his absence, I'd say this, this decision will be looking like an episode out of utopia. So take it, take a, take the planning authority role seriously, but also work through the impact of your decisions as well. Support Alderman Newington's motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I do, I understand why the officers have got it for refusal, I can understand that. And because it was for refusal, I certainly went round and had a look at the wall. But look, I do agree with Alderman Walker and others. Once I saw the fence, I expected to see something totally different. With the pool there, I certainly understood the, the safety aspect of it. So in that sense, I will support Alderman Newington's motion.
Alderman Newington?
Ah, no, I think everyone's, both their position pretty clear. I think it's a, you know, the right decision in this situation. I encourage everyone to vote accordingly.
The motion is as circulated by Alderman Newington for approval, subject to endorsed plans. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. 11, Alderman Kendy? 11.3.5 is a development application, 24 Thompson's Way, Clifton Beach, for a dwelling out, building and pool. Thanks, Alderman Chong. Do we have a second, please? Alderman Blomley? Would you like to speak to it?
I'll support the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Alderman Blomley?
Likewise, Mr. Mayor.
Other speakers? Okay, so put the motion for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. If we could recall Alderman Kendy, please? Peers and Edmonds, I think you were going to take leave for the next motion. Now conclude our business as a planning authority. And moving on to asset management, 11.5.1 is levelling the playing field grant programme. Proposal to authorise a GM to apply for a grant at Ansec Park. Thanks, Alderman Walker. Second of Alderman Newington.
Look, I think it's a solid proposal. This council, back in the notice of motion section, just unanimously passed Alderman Newington's motion around fiscal activity, will here as a example of a, if you like, state level or federal level initiative that comes together to facilitate public increased activity. And it's worthy of support.
Yeah, just quickly, yeah, I mean, look, that's the sort of thing that one of our core chores at the moment, I suppose, to form wise of giving people access to facilities that they're up to scratch and having played there many years ago. I don't think the change would have changed too much from the 1980s. So I think it's well overdue to look at the space, but also too, to look at a more contemporary use of the space as well in terms, not only of the football and the cricket, but some of the other things we can add to the whole project that will, that will bring people in that don't necessarily want to play sport, but actually, you know, create a better space for the whole community use. So I certainly think it's a good opportunity and a chance to put our hands out and get some money from some of these other layers of government is something we're never going to knock back. So I think, you know, it's a good outcome for us to go down this path.
Other speakers? Alderman Blomley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I think this is, the move is a very solid proposal. And wouldn't it be absolutely fantastic for the people of Franklin to actually receive investment and injection from the state government and indeed the federal government into some of the sporting facilities in the down south here in Tasmania? Wouldn't that be absolutely fantastic? It'd be great to see some money being spent in southern Tasmania on these sorts of facilities. And I think that, you know, we haven't got full costings yet, but this is going to be a significant investment in the facilities at Lindisfarne, circa two to two and a half million dollars. And if we can gain one million dollars from the state government, that would be absolutely fantastic. And that would send a very clear message to the people of Franklin and southern Tasmania that the liberal governments at both levels have not forgotten you.
Let's, Alderman Blomley, this is, let's keep it the government rather than a particular party, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other speakers? Rider reply?
No.
Motion is, then we go ahead and apply for the grant, all those in favour? They're carried unanimously. Could we recall Alderman's peer as and Edmunds, please? Could we recall Alderman's Piers and Edmonds, please? Next motion is under governance, eleven point seven point one, a change of commencement time for council meetings, changed to seven o'clock from the nineteenth of August. First, Alderman Kendy, second, Alderman Adams. Would you like to speak to it?
No, Mr Mayor, I think the recommendation is sufficient.
Thank you.
Nothing to add other than I think it strikes a good balance.
Other speakers?
Yes, look, I noticed the hands that went up and it was largely from amongst the five new Aldermen around the table. And look, they came to change local government and here they are, to change our council. Well done.
Any other speakers? No need to reply on that. I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. And for members of the public, please note that the next council meeting starts at seven PM rather than seven thirty. Okay, Alderman's question time. There are no matters on notice, questions without notice. Alderman Warren? Alderman Blomley?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I'd like to know what the status is for the Croquet Club's proposal to us. Where are we at with that?
Are you able to shed light on this, please?
Thank you for the question. At this point in time, the council hasn't made any decision and I understand that we've been working through various options other than Celestia Street, which is, as I understand it, not viable. Mr Graham may be able to add to that or correct me from what?
Through you, Mr Mayor. We're still waiting for the report to come through to officers at the moment from a consultant who's helping, he's met with the club, I think, a week or week and a half ago. He's on leave at the moment. So we're just waiting for the report to come back to completion for review by officers and then we'll go to a council workshop.
Yeah, just a quick one. I've seen on Facebook the advertising for submissions around the Howard Gardens border issue. I just had a quick question. Is education department involved in that process as well?
No, that's a separate process that relates to school districts. It's got nothing to do with the boundary change.
Alderman Blomley?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm around a lot of clubs where now there's no smoking around our sporting areas, but we have tiny little no smoking signs out there. Can we have some much larger no smoking signs, please?
Certainly explore that if you could provide more detail.
If I have to do that.
Thank you. Alderman Walker?
Following on tangentially from what Alderman Blomley asked, I regret, regrettably, council decided not to keep supporting Business East, which assisted businesses throughout the Clarence municipality. Can you confirm that the consultancy reports around the Croquet project roughly worked out to be the same as the amount of funding we were providing to Business East every year?
Obviously. I'd need to take that on notice.
My second question, which you'll probably, which I'll be mesmerised if you don't have to take on notice, relates to payroll tax, which is a tax council has to pay. What are we currently, what are we, how much payroll tax are we currently paying every year and how does that compare with ten years ago?
I'll take it on notice, thank you. Alderman Newington?
I'll file, thanks, Mr Mayor.
No, thank you.
As I indicated to you before, I have two questions, both relating to the Kangaroo Bay site, the being developed. It's been mooted that Kangaroo Bay may well need to be a stage development with the accommodation going first. And that's been put down, I think partly to the cost blowout from fifty million to eighty million. Will a stage, my first question is, will a stage development require a new planning approval to enable it to proceed in stages?
Lovell, are you able to recall the details of the existing planning approvals?
It's quite a complicated plan. I'd like to take it on notice because I think it's on a major review of the number of changes that are planned. My initial thoughts are though that the development was proved as a single integrated development and there are physical connections between the two. So we will need to block implications of staging that. So I can come back on that in a little bit.
Mary, if I can add to that, my understanding of the project as it stands at the moment is we're waiting on advice from the developer as to what their plan is to move through the project. So it may be a question that we can't answer specifically until we actually know that information.
Was a, yeah, well, we'll deal with that at the time. The next question, Mr Mayor, relates to what options are available to council to ensure that the second stage actually proceeds? Or could we be left with some student accommodation stuck in the heart of the middle of our social heart?
I think to some extent it is an academic question at this stage. We are waiting to see, ultimately, the decision will be ours, whether we, we've got a decision to make in November as to whether or not there's been substantial development to the site or not. And in the process of considering whether or not there's been substantial development in terms of the contract, issues like that will become known or not. In other words, we'll know that there's an issue there to deal with or not.
Respect, it's not a question really of whether it's a stage development or not. It's a question of, you know, if the development isn't completed, are we, what options do we have, you know? Can we get, can we go back and say, no, no, that's not what we meant by substantial completion? Or if it's a stage development, the question is, is what options do we have of ensuring that the whole development eventually comes through? And I think that, you know, you can take it on notice if you like, but I think there is a quest, it's not, it's a question that will really need to be addressed and you'll need to know that before you start entering into discussions about whether it's a stage development.
I agree entirely with you, but I don't think we'll be in a position to consider that problem until we get more information about what their plans are. We don't have that at this stage. But, and I would take it, I think we do have to take it on notice until we get further information about what's starting to unfold. But it's something that we as a council have to be very conscious of in approving any further subsequent staging or whatever, if it comes up.
Whilst you're taking it on notice, you might just have a look into see whether substantial commencement, which is, I understand, part of the conditions of the contract and that it's beyond the substantial completions or commencement that we normally apply as standing matters. Just how much of it, is it, you know, is substantial commencement just stage one? Is that enough? Is, I think, at the root of my question.
Yeah, and understood. All right, a question for that, yes. Okay, so it's time to move to closed session and move into committee. I'd like to thank the members of the public. And Alderman Piers, you're moving there? Seconded. Thanks, Alderman Edmonds. All those in favour? Against, that was in favour, was it? Yep. Carried unanimously.